Crystal, Nikki.
Here.
Dave.
Here.
Yes.
Here.
Yep.
Tom. Who called?
Hannah.
Here.
Laura.
Here.
Margaret.
Here.
Verification of agenda posts.
All right.
All right, so please wait. Please, Mr. President.
United States of America and the United States of America and the United States of America. We are a family, 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 we are a family. Under God, indivisible, the Lord is our God.
All right, General, one point four, discussion of possible action on the preliminary resolution to consider consolidation.
So we had a discussion. Everyone hear me all right? Or would you rather have this being used? Yes. Oh, they said, "You think it's fine like this."
I can pick you up, yep.
I'll say that the past has been difficult hearing the board members speaking at these meetings.
Without this, better with it.
Better with it, obviously, all right.
So we had a discussion at the Loyals Board meeting last week. On the preliminary resolution to consider consolidation. The advisory vote went in favor of it. We had on the docket, the agenda today was to discuss the possible action. There is a year from the time we do this that has to be in there before we can go to consider a resolution to consolidate. So with that, we will have a discussion. We talked about Butler just the other day. And he said, "So if we did something, approved it in resolution to consider in January, our timeline will be what we have discussed the last handful of months." So our discussion and opinion, Greenwood's board and our board, have your resolution, preliminary resolution to consider consolidation. Then what that would start, once we did that in January, you would have a December of 26, or you could run your your resolution to consolidate, and then you're 18 months from there. So if the boards wanted to take it back to the communities, that is something that would be able to work in there. So the I guess if there was a misunderstanding, it was because we were operating Bob Butler was under the understanding that we're following the traditional timeline. And I think we had told them that a few times, but I don't think that clicked with them until we had a meeting with them Monday, that we're now following the traditional 12-month timeline. We want to follow the alternative timeline, which is 18-month timeline. That 18-month timeline has to be specified in the resolution to consider consolidation, which it is in this most recent copy that you have. So the statute, if you think all you have a copy of the statute now also, if statute 117.08 to consolidation of school districts, we would be following number five, A1, which is the alternative timeline, which means that we would adopt a resolution to consider consolidation. And the very next December, we would have to have the resolution to consider, or the resolution to consolidate. So if we did that now, it would be December of 25, which would get us to consolidation a year earlier than we were, that we're planning. So we don't want to do that. We want to wait until after January 1st, because then the next December would be, the following December would be December of 26, which follows the timeline for 18 months to get us to July 1st of 2028. Saying that, this is the, this is the preliminary resolution. This is not a binding resolution. This is just essentially confirming what our voters have told us, that we're acknowledging we are considering consolidation. Therefore, if we have any, if we're looking to expend any resources that we're doing because we've passed this resolution to consider consolidation. So that's why, but it does need to wait until after January 1st. But gives us plenty of time to look at it more step in and see if there's anything that doesn't make sense, or if we have questions. The part where the very last whereas is the one that talks about the alternative timeline, and that has to be stated in here, otherwise we're bound to follow the traditional timeline of 12 months. So it's stated in here, under that last whereas. Statement is found. Does that make sense? Any questions on that? So unless there's a discussion, there's really no action with that. I don't tonight, but we definitely have to. And it doesn't mean that it has to happen in January either. Like I would say, we look at this, if there's questions, we have it ready for maybe discussion in January, but if it's approved in January, February, it doesn't really matter. It just has to be approved sort of following December is when the resolution to consolidate has to be done.
Is there any, like, specific amount of time that needs to lapse or can lapse between passing this and passing that?
Not according to the statute. The statute just says it should be adopted on the first December beginning after the adoption of the resolutions.
Anytime?
Anytime, yep, yep. But I think that, I mean, I think for the sake of planning and moving forward, we want this done as soon as we're able to follow the timeline so that we are continuing to move forward and honestly continue to show people that we're moving forward.
My suggestion on this timeline, the sooner we can get it, gives us more time to put the true resolution together. So I think January would be late. If we did it already early in December, or not early in December, it would be the following December we would approve Bob's. Would we do it correct?
Yeah, you could do it, you could do it in December.
I'm sure it doesn't have to happen in December just because of the month.
Yeah, I would say that this, this is a formality that should prevent us from planning. Like, we can't wait till January to continue planning for consolidation. We need to complain, you know, continue planning as we wait to pass this. Again, this is a formality.
Correct. So I think January would be a good month to get that passed.
Well, yeah, whenever both boards are ready to do it, I think, you know, as soon as, as soon as possible. But again, it's just a formality. It doesn't, doesn't, shouldn't impact any planning that any of us agree.
So you recommend that in a joint meeting?
I would recommend any decisions about consolidation at a joint meeting.
I guess the handle that you sent or gave us tonight with the alternative timelines gets sent to, because when I was reading through the DPI website and the WASB, that's kind of what I saw too, that you have a sense about the alternate timeline. I just had some notes written from earlier today that I just wanted to share. I'm a little bit concerned that we as a board were told that this had to be passed, this resolution considered had to be passed, and it was going to be passed tonight so we can continue conversations. Because I guess I'm concerned that what if we would have passed it tonight and some of us board members wouldn't have found this, like? I spent several hours looking through documents, and maybe, maybe other people did too, and maybe some of us didn't look at it at all. But it's hard to trust the process and to approve things when I felt like I was brought information that wasn't, wasn't accurate or current. And it just makes me a little bit nervous moving forward with some of this stuff, because I feel like we're going to have to, like, read the final document really closely, I guess. I just, that would be my concern, that's all.
Just on that, I have the same interpretation.
I have the same interpretation that you did, that WASB actually has legal counsel that will help all of us if you don't understand some of this stuff, not use them. And I've asked Joe too, like, I like the layman service kind of thing. I'm not a lawyer, not even close. But they do a good job of saying, "Hey, this is what, this is, this what this means." And even then, I still struggle with it. And I ask them, "Hey, Joe, what is this that we talked it through?" And then, "Oh, no." You had already had discussions on that I never realized, but I, I'm the same way. But that website is awesome. There is legal counsel. We're all entitled to, as members that we can use, to add any of this stuff, so.
I know that at the last meeting, we had concerns about, about the resolution, and this is the preliminary resolution, it's not the final resolution, and that's, the question was, was it, just as was stated, was it just referring to the 12-month versus the alternative timeline? And so we did what we said we were going to do, or we asked our superintendents to do, is to check with WASB and their, and their lawyers to be able to look at that and to provide the correct wording, so we now have that. And so, yeah, certainly the discussion and we put on their possible action, but we, we learned in as we were looking at this, that we can't make the action now, nor do we need to make the action now. So that we, it's just confirming what we had done last meeting and asking our superintendents to, to, to look at or to provide information to WASB, to make sure we have the right and correct wording, and that we are on the correct path. So I guess that reaffirms what we're, what we're looking at, and that we're doing it in the right manner. You know, certainly, you know, the information we need to analyze, and so it's, I'm just saying it's reaffirming that what we've talked about from last month.
Yeah, I think that this is just uncharted water for all of us that have done it before. So, you know, there's probably going to be mistakes along the way. Nothing's potentially been very clear from the start, that we want to be 10-month process, not a 12-month process. But it's been very clear from the start, everything we've done. When I talked about Butler, he was looking for examples. He couldn't even find examples. Like, other districts have completely missed this step, have not submitted this step. He couldn't even find an example in other places, so he drafted this. It's something that he said has to be done, but he couldn't find, find an example for us. So there's, that would be clear, absolutely nothing. Like, we're trying to navigate this process as carefully as we can, and that's why we have 12 board members here also to have discussion and raise questions and try and work through this together, or it's going to take all of us, because we, none of us have ever done this before. So there, we, I'm glad that we have, absolutely relieved that the question was brought up and we're able to get the, get the correct answer, and now we have the correct answer. The correct answer is, we're following the 18-month. Bob was completely clear on that now, that anything moving forward is with the understanding that we are following the 18-month timeline. But also, that's not the norm for consolidations either. So that's new about, because the norm, the norm for consolidations is the traditional timeline of 12 months. So they also haven't done that, but I think we made it pretty clear that 18 months is what we want, to make sure that we take our time and make good decisions and do things right. And I think that's what this afford us, the time to talk about things and make good decisions. So I, I think that's exactly what happened. I'm happy that it happened that way. And I would agree that when you have questions, and you, whether you second guess or bring it up, so we can make sure that we figure it out. We have Bob at our, at our convenience to help us, guide us through this. Um, I guess I just want to be clear too on this pre-resolution. It doesn't have a timeframe at all, but it has to be passed. This could be done 19 months before the consolidation and then you're, timeframe. And then you could make it just a month, okay, before. So pre-resolution would need to be made one month, not even, it could be a day, it could be a day or a quarter. So at least, when I guess we're here that we're, we want to do, go slow. It seems like sometimes when I brought some stuff up about the consolidation and asked for like referendums, it's like you need to push it again. The next step is pushed in here, and I guess that's what I want to, we still have asked since I've been on the board, where's your plan? You know, are we going to have a referendum? Are we getting buildings studied? And that's going to get answered tonight, some of that stuff forever through it. But I could go on with lots of things, but I would say that, I brought up two that. Seventeen to 18 years ago, there was a study done for consolidation, and that was done transparently. Chatek Werholzer had the same person that did Loyals, and that was transparent, and that was done correctly. But every time I brought this up, the next step is push, it's pushed on, so let's get this resolution done. And that's what I'm, there's no rush. This can be done one month before the resolution to consolidate. It doesn't need to be done 12 months, 18 months ahead of time. We continue, as we've done for the last two years, this board have worked towards consolidation. There's no rush to get that pre-resolution done. It starts the process, is what it says. I just want to make that clear to everyone. Anyone else have any other?
Just to rebut on that, Matt, the community's told us to be rushing, pushing, so why do you want to do it only one month before you need to do the next step? Why not get it to do all of us?
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is you could do it one month. It doesn't have to be done and pushed so quickly. Every time I brought up the study, you've rebutted me, you've turned around and brought some stuff, trying to push it quicker and quicker and quicker, and then this resolution was brought up. I'm not saying it doesn't, it can't be done. I'm saying it could be done a month before. We have continued to work together. We've continued to talk about policy, what they're going to do. And there's a problem. That's not illegal. So you don't need to push it. What I'm saying is let's get to a review tonight from CISA. Let's get some studies going. Let's get those plans in place, telling people what staffing is going to be, financially, one school, two schools, I think three schools is not going to work, but that's what I'm asking to be done. And it seems like people are trying to block that at the time. And that's why I think we need to listen to CISA, and we need to start putting discussion. When I brought this up and I contacted CISA and them, basically what happened was, then this came on there, Loyals' resolution, and then when I tried to get it on there, then it was blocked. They didn't want to put that, they didn't want to put it on here to make an agenda to have the presentation for CISA. And then it was on the initial, it was, it was discussion and action. That's been taken off now, said John on Loyals' part of it. It doesn't say now, it's just a presentation. Why isn't it? Why can't we discuss it? Why can't we take action if we wanted to start the study? If we want to get moving on it, why don't we start the process and just start the study? That's what I'm asking. And moving forward, I believe when they have their presentation tonight, there will be discussion on, they're going to present, can we roll right into this? So if we have any more comments on resolution to consider? So can I ask then, why did you remove the discussion and action on it? Because it just says presentation from CISA 10 regarding the facility study. Discussion and action is taken off. That was not wording. That's just my understanding. CISA was coming to the presentation. But it, it's, it's a might be difference in how we notice our meetings. This is all of mine, like, Greenwood's board, all of us are under discussion and possible action. So the way it's posted for Greenwood is we have discussion and possible action, and under that is listed. It's just a different way of posting it. It doesn't mean that you can't have discussion here.
Yeah, discussion action is still happening.
That, that's how, that's how Greenwood posts, posts meetings. Lloyd and Derek, he mentioned that, and we meant, we just post our stuff a little bit differently, so it's not, it's just a semantics of how we post our, our agenda. You know, our, our agenda just says discussion possible action. I have listed all the things where Loyals has the 1.4, 1.5, and it's just a different way of doing it. Doesn't mean there can't be discussion about it. But I think it's, I still think it's important to have a presentation and to bring back, like, to the group about what that timeline could look like, because we have, we've had a talk about a timeline, really, and that's, to me, the talk about a timeline would come before making the decision within a timeline. So setting a timeline for what we want to do to be, would be the piece that would come before taking action to sum a piece of that timeline, which would be a facility study. So I believe we can have a discussion when they are done and have questions for them and go from there.
When we had our, when we had our, all right. When we had our meeting, just last week, we were with that, we talked about discussion and action, and I thought we could take action, is what was Butler said, that it's not discussion and action on our agenda.
So you're talking about the resolution?
No, I'm talking about our, about the CISA.
Our CISA presentation?
So under Greenwood, the agenda?
Yes.
It's under, I believe, under here, under the action policy, and we follow your big calls.
Yeah, we, we put everything under to give us the option to have discussion and our possible actions, just the way we post it. But to be honest with you, I don't think, I'm not going to desert speakerboard, but I don't think they would be ready, I don't think it'd be fair to ask for actionable items tonight, because we haven't, A, like, they haven't had any discussion about, you know, putting this on the agenda. And, and B, we would likely have to have more than one company with, by board policy, potentially at the cost of our, we would have to go RFP, so I don't think there would be anything actionable to do today with this. But I do think, like, as we develop a timeline, if and when the facility study is part, you know, part of that timeline, then that it would be appropriate time to take action on it. I think it's fine to hear what different people have, and different opinions, different services, and things like that, but I, I don't, I mean, as far as rushing, I think that would be a rush to approve or take action on starting the facility study, saying we haven't really had any discussion on it yet. But I, so, yeah, I, I would, I would, it's Lloyd, I would, I would guess you could take action on it, because it's just posted as a presentation, but... So then I, I, I take the blame for not looking at our discussion. All right?
I guess all I, I'm worried about is in this process, is that are we going to have time to get the study done? And by state statute, if we do the study and the people wanted to go back to, I'm champion, if we wanted to go back to a referendum on a ballot vote, talking about that, we need to make sure we start the process of this financial study, of the building study, having enough time to get it back on the ballot, the vote, before we make the final resolution. That's what I want to get done.
Yeah, I think that, I think that discussion starts here, and I think it's, I think it's a good place to start. Like, I think we're all over the place with, there's, there's many people who don't want a facility study too, right? So we have to honor, honor the opinions of all of everybody, and that's what's going to take some time to develop that timeline. So, you know, what is the time? We know, you know, we know we have this preliminary resolution, and we know we have the landing, the arrival time, July 1st, 2028, that's what we know. And we know that we have to have a resolution to consolidate in December of 2028, or 2026, right? Those are, those are, those are what we know. What happens in between there, that's what we have to figure out, and tonight is a good night to start that conversation, right? But it's, there is definitely not a clear-cut way to get to the arrival of consolidation in 2028. There's not, there's not, there are many different opinions about that, and there's many different people that have opinions about how our district spent money on this and, and, and what that looks like, and when some of those things. We, we do have to have some healthy conversation about that, because I hear both, I, I, I think we all probably hear, hear both. Some, you know, some want things done now, something, I mean, some people want us consolidated tomorrow, right? But we know that we're trying to be responsible in the process and honor the process and take our time to look at some of these things. So we have to honor all the viewpoints. There are as many as we can as we go through this. So I think tonight is a good night to start that discussion. With that, I think the presentation by CISA 10 today will, or tonight will, tell us what they can do and go through what, what it would look like. So I think this is a good first step, so. Without further ado, I would like to present Lindsay Schreiner and Lou Schultz, Facilities, from CISA 10. Thank you guys for coming and presenting.
That one?
Got it. I'm going to try really hard to keep the mic by my face, but if I don't want to, I apologize. So yeah, as Chris was saying, my name is Lindsay Schreiner. I am a facility advisor with CISA 10. I have been with CISA 10 for about four and a half years now. Before that, I was with the Oakley School District and the Business Office, so I have quite a wealth of knowledge from all of aspects of facilities and finances and all of that fun stuff.
Can you hear me?
I'm Lou Schultz, I'm the Director of Facilities Management in CISA 10. I've been there for 15 years and get a little bit of everything and some general oversight from that, so go ahead.
So just a little bit of a background. I'm sure you are all aware of CISA's, and there are 12 CISA's in the state of Wisconsin. CISA 10, we are a little bit different. We've got a facilities management department. We are the only CISA in the state of Wisconsin that has that, so that allows us to go all over the state and provide services. We provide services to over 200 schools annually. We do everything from facility audits to referendum planning, construction management, owners' representatives, and then environmental health and safety. That is a huge service that we offer that both Loyal and our U.S. school districts take advantage of, and we are up here quite a bit, so. A little bit about the timeline that we were kind of going for was, just speaking with Chris and Joe, we've had quite a few conversations over the last year, year and a half regarding this, and it was our understanding that it's, it's a very long and very complicated process, but the wheels are turning. And we are currently kind of in limbo with the financials. Bear, I know, has done their presentation here, so we do have that information, but again, the state budget is not final, so that is kind of up in the air as well. So that is definitely going to help pave the way once we have that. I don't know about you guys, I get an email every single day that it's changed, so it should, should be interesting once we finally see what comes out of that. From there, it's kind of a, a few different things. Yeah, fall of 2025, we're going to do the financials, adopt the state budget. Have to do updated financial analysis at that point with the new state budget, and then consolidation resolution, our understanding of January 2026.
Just to jump in here real quick too, and I know looking at this timeline, every district, and this is a very common theme that we're running into, the school districts are going to do a lot of facility audits throughout the state, and a lot of it's not a bigger conversation, what you guys are having, where you're consolidating, a lot of it is, we have eight elementary schools, we can go down to three, we need to go down to two, four, whatever that is. But this is a real conversation that a lot of school districts that are in your situations are having, which are very similar, but this one's a little bit different when you're combining two school districts. So as we've been talking to these gentlemen for a year and a half now, a lot of this is, you kind of want to make sure when you're looking at this timeline, and that's what we want to present today, is this- and that's what we want to present today, is this timeline can adjust. And there's some flexibility within this timeline. There's different variables depending on how, how that speed goes. But one thing is, is you want to be transparent and you want to make sure that you're getting your tasks done in the timeline in order so you're not getting ahead of yourself. Because a lot of these things with these smaller communities is all of a sudden you start getting into something, somebody hears about something, that work gets around very quickly. And you guys have done a very good job with where you've gotten to this point to, let's not worry about where the high school is. Let's not worry about where the middle school is at this point. Does it make sense for us to consolidate and put these two schools together? And you guys have done a good job and you've heard from your communities. So now that we look at this, when we get into this timeline, I don't want you to look at this like this is specific and on May of 2027, we need to do this. There's variables there, but this gives you the key highlights of, as we go through this, you want to be very educated with how you do this. You want to be very educated on when you bring your community in to these certain pieces, because you want to be transparent with them, but you don't want to be giving information out to the community that it's not the true factual or all your ducks in a row information here. And that's any referendum that you work on or that we look at. A successful referendum, you're planning for that referendum 12 months in advance. You have your information, you have your ducks in a row. So you can educate your community within those 12 months. And we'll get into that a little bit here, but I just don't want you to think of, we're saying May at a certain date. It's, there's variables here that we can adjust. But I think you'll get the key highlights and control through this.
Yeah, absolutely. And to Lou's point too, um, the 12 months is definitely the ideal, you know, at least 12 months of planning. We can do it for less, we have done it for less. Um, best, best practice though, give it at least 12 months and put the time in, get the community involved, do all the steps, do it correctly. We are huge on community involvement and being completely transparent about everything. Um, and, and, you know, involving the community as part of all the decisions that need to be made. Um, and, and to do that well, it, it takes time.
So I think fall of 2025, we've got that. We're kind of working on a lot of that by now. Financial piece of it, I know we've watched it. Um, but again, consolidation, January 2026.
So planning wise, we were planning for the spring of 2027 to come in and do the comprehensive facility audit. Um, we are aware that Loyal has, has had a facility audit. Obviously, we want to take a look at that. Um, I'm kind of a perfectionist and I like to see things for myself. So we want to make sure it covered everything that needed to be covered. Um, but that would absolutely include a space analysis. Um, you know, anything and everything you can think of, we, we need to consider with this. So it is going to take some time. Um, we're going to look at busing, we're going to look at the daycares, the early learning centers, the, you know, what do you have going from one school to the other? You know, is, is it smart to keep, you know, some of your main classes in one school versus the other? You know, every single scenario we're, we're going to look at. Um, we will provide a detailed list of what we call FIMs, or Facility Improvement Measures. Um, those are going to include cost of all the buildings, where they stand, what it's going to cost to get them up to where they should be, um, what the 10-year plan is, you know, what, what is this going to cost in the next one to three years, three to five, five to 10? Um, so you guys have all of the information you need to make a very well-informed decision. Along with that, we will also prioritize as well. So, um, we'll, we'll give you the, the top list of things that should be taken care of right away. You can plan from there.
Most facility audits, when people are coming in, it's two to five, five to 10 years, and they're looking at your maintenance needs. And when we're looking at a situation like this, there's a lot more that goes into it than what square footage do you have in your classroom? How many students do you have in each classroom? And then combining those two districts together, like Lindsay said, and transportation and cost. So when we come back with that facility audit, it lays all the cards out on the table of what needs to be done with these buildings. But it also lays out some of the cards of this building might be suited better for this situation or this building might be suited better for this situation. So then that way, when we come back to the table, we're working with you folks on, okay, now we have the information. Now that's when you start getting into the details of, where do we go here, what makes sense? Start having the conversations of daycare shortages or issues. Is that something that we can tackle? And so that way, we have those conversations leading up to what needs to be done for the possible referendum.
Does anybody have any questions so far? All right. Um, so then, uh, May of 2027, you will come and present the full facility audit to your joint board meeting. Um, we'll discuss all of the findings, the building needs, our recommendations, and then next steps. Uh, kind of where, where you want us to go from here. We'll provide you with all the information that you need and then it's your, your decision. Um, along with that, with the planning, we will continue to support you, collaborate you throughout your decision-making. Um, we would highly recommend developing an advisory committee. Um, that's going to serve multiple purposes. But if you, if you get community members from each district to help plan out what your next steps are going to be with your buildings, um, and then they get other community members involved, you know, and the word spreads and this is what we're doing and this is why we're doing it. And you've got to come and see the condition of this. This is why, you know, it, it's going to be a lot, very beneficial for your communities. Um, that definitely yields a lot of better results. Um, and then we can establish the consolidation options and what really is going to be the best decision based on your operations, your finances, your actual building needs, um, your student needs, you know, all, all of the things that, that should be considered.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Um, when is this, I should say, what is the date where all of these numbers come together? Because it's a moving target, basically. If we put a new roof on the school, you have to take it off your list. And if we improve our parking lot, you have to take it off your list. So this is like a moving target. And who's going to look at this? Are you going to look at everything in May of 27 and say, okay, here's where we stand as of this month? Or are we going to, like, oh, wait, we, we improved that, take that off. We improved this, wait, nope, this needs to be done now?
I can answer that, Lindsay. So, and very good question. That's any referendum, any type of project that we're looking at doing. You know, we're planning for a referendum and all of a sudden, Loyal's is not on the list and those got five years and that boiler goes to crap. Well, you replace that water in the summer before the next heat needs. Well, you've got to start somewhere, right? And so that's the whole point of this, is to develop a facility study. But we like to do that when we are joint. So as we are a joint district and we are looking at this, these decisions are made together. So when we come together and we're looking at this as a facility audit, at the same time, Loyal and Lainwood might have roofing issues. That might be something that the joint board needs to make a decision. We need to update some roofs. But either way, on our report, we're going to put those roofs on there because we don't know when they're going to get replaced. And that's something that's on the list and that's why it's a working document. And when we say 12 months in advance to that referendum, that document can change a little bit all the way up until that resolution is passed. It's a very good question. And think of your home and what goes on in your home and what happens there that you're not expecting. Look at the size of these buildings. That happens every day. And these gentlemen have to deal with that. But that's where we try to help them and be proactive. These are your immediate needs. You have a roof that's leaking, this floor is dissectioned, it's past its warranty. If you've got money, I'd rather recommend you do it. Budgets are tough. That might be one that carries out, you know, for another year. But it's a moving document, you've got to start somewhere. But good question. We update that all the way up until we pass the resolution.
And answer your question. All right. So again, summer of 2027, districts are consolidated and operating as one, both financially and operationally. Um, that is the time where we want to consider the maintenance needs of both buildings and consider them jointly as a joint board. Um, and then totally up to you guys, uh, whether or not you're going to send a survey or not. Probably recommend it in this case, but you know, it's not always the best thing to do. Um, but I think in this instance, it would probably be a wise idea and a survey can consist of, you know, would you support, you know, like Lou said, putting roofs on both buildings? And do we keep, you know, the elementary at Creedwood and the high school at Loyal, I just don't think so. I'm not saying that's what we're going to recommend, but, um, just things like that. There's a lot to consider. That's, that's absolutely the facts here. So, um, we, we need to take everything into consideration and lay it all on the table so everyone can make the best decision for the community.
This is the summer where you get all the information out to your community so they're educated on what the needs are with your buildings and then the potential where the community survey comes in is, we're liking gym space for varsity, just to give them an example. If all of a sudden we're looking at potential new gym, to me, that's where a community survey would come in. Your community's already supporting the consolidation, okay? So that's already a next step. Your maintenance needs are maintenance needs. Depending on what building you keep, those are part of your referendum. You're going to have to update your buildings. It's the additional, the add-ons, or do we look at potential daycares? That's potentially where the survey could come in and give you factual information on what the community would support if you went to a referendum.
Next question?
Yes, we have.
Um, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this timeline. I know it's flexible, but first it's not a hypothetical timeline we have. So where, thank you.
Where it says, um, districts are consolidated and operating as one in the summer of 2027. Does this mean that we've already ordered consolidation and we've already potentially held our referendum?
Not referendum. We passed a resolution to consolidate.
But...
Yeah, it's not...
So this, is this September?
We're not consolidating. Yeah, that's not that.
So this...
We would have the resolution, we'd be making decisions together. But it's not, we're not consolidating.
That would be 2028, you're right.
Right. Yeah. We would not be operating as one in the summer of 27.
Thank you for that.
We're in 2018. Yeah, are you in 2019? Yeah. However, getting that information in the summer of 2027...
Getting this information in the summer of 2027 will also inform us for the operational referendum that we would need to put in place in the spring of 2028. So having that, you know, plenty of time in '27 would help start some of that planning. Um, so I think that's a, a big piece of this.
Hundred percent, yeah. Because once you get the actual facility audit, you've got several months, couple months of several meetings and going through this information. And there's so many different directions of where you can go. And that audit's going to help direct that of, well, this school's got $10 million, the next 10 years, this one's got $5. It's going to help you direct that, but there's going to be a lot of joint conversations. And I think, Mark, you know, when we're updating this, that's, that's on us. But that should be joint board meetings of having these conversations and when the financial, the next steps can move forward.
All right. So spring 2028, um, referendum in April of the 2028 election, um, final preparations for consolidation, July 1st of 2028. Um, it is our understanding you plan on being operating as one that dates, hopefully, potentially.
That was the board's focus point, was 2028?
Yeah.
July 1st.
So a lot of information there and how we do things at CISA. And I know it's been asked too, what are the prices and what are the fees? And a lot of that depends on the direction that you go. Um, for example, if you're just looking at a facility audit, that's, that's a separate fee. Or if you're looking at assistance with referendum planning and then assistance where you're going to do projects on the backside, that's where we go into our project development agreement, which is going to be more cost-effective for the district. So to Joe's point, um, it would have to be discussion and action and we'd have to give them some type of proposal or an agreement on something that would need to be action item. Um, so with that information being said, we are here for questions that you guys may have for us, but looking for next steps, at least on our side of things with CISA, would be is to get you a proposal or an agreement to move into those next steps of looking at the timeline. There's time here and as we move, we move at the pace that the board and you guys are ready to move together. And I, when I say that, I do a lot of referendum work. I do a lot of community presentations. And when I say together, I really mean together. Uh, we've got to be one as you go through this because you're all going to get pinpointed questions and you all want to be on the same page as you keep moving forward. And if you guys are more united as one, it is really going to help your success rate of communication and going to the next level compared to if we're staying and we're not all on the same page.
Just a couple of comments and questions. Um, one would be, um, I'm, I'm sure you've worked with Bear Financial with many other projects in the past. So the question was, when do you start pulling in that, you know, either the financial information that they could provide or information you can provide back to them so that it can be put into budget and therefore help with, you know, the operating referendum, you know, possibly? Or, or we need to look at some capital doctors that, you know, for renovation of any of the buildings? So when, I guess, just a ballpark or typically, when does that happen?
Yep. Great question. We've done a lot of it prepared. Um, and depending on the process, like, a typical referendum, you're working 12 months in advance. If it's an operational referendum, those numbers, they can start working on that right away. And which they already have, you guys both have operational referendums that you're working on that are coming to an end. So they could put that information together and start working on that. As we develop the facility audit and we start looking at what those maintenance needs are, then that's where we work with you guys and, okay, are we working up to 10 years? Are we working five years? We will in 15 years. And then we start working what those numbers are, to your point. Do we tie in that to an operational referendum and add an extra $5 million to get some context up, get us up to speed? Or do we look at doing an operational referendum with a capital referendum? There's so many different avenues that you can go down a little bit earlier. You get that information with the audit, you pull in Bear right away and you start going through that information. Good question.
Thank you. And then the other part of the question was on the facility advisor committee. Um, just a thought that we both have our building and grounds committees. And I think they are very, um, important to utilize those people who are, you know, presenting the information around our, our facilities. So I, I guess my recommendation is, is probably as soon as possible, try to pull, you know, both, both schools, building grounds committees together to analyze things. And then, you know, then what is your recommendation on, you know, number of people maybe from the community that should be part of that or, you know, would it? I, I'm sure you don't want to have a, a large, large committee, but yet you want to have enough voices or enough people in the community that would be, you know, have the experience and also be interested in really looking at, at things regarding the facility.
Yep, good question. And I think the full board is good to be there and to be listening and to be aware of the situation. But this is where you get a couple of staff members, you get a couple of community members that are key stakeholders in each community. Um, your buildings and grounds, there's no better knowledge than your buildings and grounds. Those are the guys in the moment that see things every day. They know where the water's coming into the building when you get tourists and the rain, they got to be at the table, absolutely. Um, but it depends, every community, that's what I'm going to say, every community is a little bit different. We've had facility advisory committees where there's 30 people. We've had our staff. And if you have 30, you're not getting the answer from everybody because everybody's got their own opinion. There'll be cooks in the kitchen, my wife would say. But you're getting the voice heard. And if you can get a majority of 30 people and they're on the same page when you're at a community meeting, good things are going to happen when it comes to the vote time. So I would recommend you get community members from both, So I would recommend you get community members from both, both, staff members from both. You get your key stakeholders. And I always like to want the ones that are very negative, that would be the first person I go to. Have them make sure they're coming in here and sit at meetings, because those are the people that are gonna be talking the negative things. And it's best for them to be right in here and hear it right from the most and everybody else.
Luke, can you talk a little bit about the audits themselves and the CISA contract with their party contractors to determine rope longevity? Or you guys are experts in-house or just speak to the actual audit process?
Yep, good question. So we'll start with the kickoff meeting. We get, we have been group in Buildings and Grounds. And we sit down, we'll look through the issues and the concerns that happen, because it's not raining every day or it's not spelling every day and figure, figure that out. We have engineers on staff. We are not certified engineers or architects, but we got multiple differed, I guess you could say personnel. So we got structural people that are very good at looking at structural. We have HEB people. We're fully environmental health safety insured. So it is a CISA 10 approach as we come into this. We can do the cost estimates, but for example, if you look at something and it's pretty rough in one area, like a structural issue and there's cracking that's pretty bad, that's where we put, we recommend this is a pretty serious matter, that you get a structural engineer or somebody like that to come in and look at it. But we've developed an audit. Roofs, those are usually pretty straightforward and easy, because you're just looking at warranty for longevity. If it's a 60 mil or is it balanced, is it tiered? But our staff, the 50 people or something that we have on staff, there'll probably be 10 people or so that are working on it and a couple of people that you see face to face. But there's a lot of people behind the scenes putting it together.
I'm glad you asked that, because I was just gonna go into kind of how that works. And, and as you mentioned, the Buildings and Grounds, those are definitely the first people we interview when we come in to do a facility audit. And we've been doing at least one a month, two lately. But yeah, we'll interview the administrators, we'll interview a couple of board members, we'll interview principals, Buildings and Grounds staff, teachers. We like to talk to the IT staff, find out what their struggles are. Kind of anyone that'll talk to us when we're walking around too. We like to get everybody's opinions. So we, we take a lot of time on these and we put together a really, really good report. And I will definitely send you guys some examples. I think all of your email addresses are online, so I can send you some of the recent ones that we've done. So you can take a look at what, what to expect. But along with the reports, we also provide the Buildings and Grounds staff with a spreadsheet so they can continue to update it as they make improvements for years to come. We, we want it to be a working document that they can continue to use, so.
So are the majority of your studies that you do largely for the purpose of capital referendum or something like that?
Yes and no. It's good practice to have a facility audit every five to seven years anyway, just to make sure, you know, you keep things updated and things are getting taken care of. You know, Buildings and Grounds staff in general are just swamped. And so, you know, updating that document isn't always top priority. So we, we like to do it anyway. But unfortunately, with the states and the budgets and funding and all of that are in there, it's a lot of times, yes, it is for referendum purposes.
We get into, there's been safety, security, a lot of that, the DOJ that came out. So we've done safety, security audits, we've done just energy audits, we've done just exterior audits, just playground audits. Really depends on what you are the customers looking for.
So at the end of the day, when you're done with your study, are you gonna suggest where the schools are and what to do? Are you gonna have, this is the recommendation? Are you gonna have two options? Or how does that work? Are you just coming in with one recommendation on this? And the biggest question, what if one side and the other doesn't like it? Then that's where we fell down 20 years ago.
It's a very good question. And you gotta get a little bit further down the road before what those options are gonna be delivered. I can tell you one with the facility audit, it's gonna tell you what your maintenance needs are for your buildings. It's also gonna tell you two of what buildings are structured better for holding elementary school kids, middle school kids and high school kids. So as you look at that audit, you're gonna have what you need to do to update buildings, what buildings are better suited compared to the others. And then that's where decisions are gonna be made. CISA's not gonna come and say, this needs to be Loyola Greenwood High School, and this is gonna be the spot and tell you that's what you need to do. That needs to come to a conclusion with all the school board and the Facility Advisory Committee. Our job is to lay the docs out, so they're all on the table. Here's what the costs are, here's what your options are. And then that Facility Advisory Committee needs to lay out, here's what our options are. And then your community survey to your point, that's where it drives home of, here's our options, here's what the service has. Does that help?
I'm telling you where we fell down last night.
Yep.
Yeah, we're gonna be provided mainly with facts, right? It, it, it's a fact that Loyola's gonna be a new gym in the next five years, I'm not saying that you do. But that's what we're gonna provide. We're not, we're not gonna come in and say, oh, well, we think you should do this. I can, but I don't think anybody in Loyola's gonna care what I think you should do. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna give you the dollar amount and what they're going to have to do.
I think a good way to look at it is you're gonna get people on this side of the fence and this side, no matter what you do and what you pay, right? And so what, the big thing is you gotta find the common sense of them. And so you're gonna get some that are saying, this is the way we need to go. That financial information will be right behind it of, this is that situation. Well, this is the situation we need to go. Well, your financial information will be right behind that. So then that way, when you reach out to your community, it's pretty straightforward when those numbers come back. That's the direction we should drive. At least the tough decisions, and no matter what someone's gonna be...
Yeah, I think that falls in line with what our communities have told us. I mean, the reason we're looking at consolidation is because they want us to save money and provide the best education possible. So when we look at all the facts that some, you know, a person or a company like CISA can provide us, we're looking at it through the lens of, okay, now we take that information and how do we use that information to, to both save taxpayer dollars and provide, you know, the best possible education opportunities possible? And I will say that I've heard those two switch as priority one from a number of people. Like, but those are, from, from what I agree, those are the top two priorities. Save money, best, best education possible. So I think if we take the information they have and use that to make those decisions, that's a win-win for everybody, even though it might not always feel like it.
So what I heard is the same thing, the reverse. All right, what's best for our students? And then, you know, how can we save money? Any other questions or comments?
Okay, so you said that in the spring of 27 is when you'll kind of give us the information. So at that point, you've already made a resolution to consolidate, so the resolution has been made. If we decide to go to referendum, that's already done, right? I just wanna make sure I understand this correctly. So, so resolution to consolidate is done. We've made that resolution, both boards have done that, we have that done. Then we say, okay, either we're going back to referendum and asking the public in or not, and then we're getting the information from you guys, correct? Yes. Okay, I just wanna make sure that I understand this correctly. Yes, and we, again, are completely flexible. We want whatever is best for you guys. So if there is something that you need us to change, we can do that. Any other questions?
Greatly appreciated. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you for having us.
All right, General Item 1.6, discuss possible action on outlining student fees.
So fees, I, I don't know if we'll have action tonight, but I do believe we need to have a discussion and work on, at least addressing and moving forward on fees. So, School District Loyola, starting last year, we have many years where it did not. We do have a consumable product fee and we have an athletic fee. Those, I believe, are the big difference. You guys do not have athletic fees or consumable product. Our consumable product fee is elementary is $25. Per student, middle school, high school is $35. A person with a $70 max, family max. Our athletic fees are $30 per sport, middle school, $40 per sport, high school, with $130 per family max. So I would, I would just entertain a discussion between the boards of what your thoughts are moving forward.
Where does that go from which we're gonna say?
Was all it to...
Fontaine, yes. Just a general Fontaine. Can use for anything. Greenwood, since I've been in the district, hasn't had fees for essentially anything. We haven't had a registration fee or a consumable product fee or athletic co-curricular fees. I do remember a conversation, gosh, it must've been six or seven years ago, it was brought up briefly at a meeting, and then the idea of FAP came up. Somebody brought that up, I was shocked that somebody knew what that was. But it's free appropriate public education. And, and the word free comes up. So I think that is what, what came up and continued to guide the Greenwood Board into continuing. You know, in, in the grand scheme of things, it didn't feel like the, the value of charging folks was a big enough benefit versus the hardship or the possible limits that it puts on some. You know, and I've been in other districts where there's fees and, and students with it that are qualified for free and loose lunch don't pay the fees. And those quickly on the way to, just because you're just charging the same people more to, to pay for things. So in Greenwood, we just budget, budget off the top to cover, cover the fees for stuff. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, just saying that's the way that we do it. Summer rec is, is co-op and it's, and it's to cover the shirt and the hat.
I think where some of this conversation came is, you know, in our co-op sports, is it fair for the Loyola athlete to be paying, if Greenwood athletes isn't? And I think that was, the other thing is, you know, almost every meeting now we say, well, what is Greenwood doing? And we get to it, whatever topic it is. And that's why we even tabled this for tonight's discussion, just to see where you guys are at. So we can start aligning some of these things. So it isn't us and them, it's...
Well, yeah, because we're gonna have to get to that point where it's the same.
Right.
So I think the sooner we can have some of these conversations, the better. I don't know, you know, I'd have to do some research, I don't know. I, I, I need, I'd have to, we'd have to look and see what would, what would a fee generate? Like, in, in Greenwood, you know, what kind of dollar would that generate? And, and is, you know, and compare that with the dollars it generates in Loyola and see is that something that we have to do or is there a way to absorb that some other way? I think athletic, you know, athletic fees are the same. We have to look at what does that actually generate, what is it want? And is it, is it something that we wanna do moving forward? Athletic, as far as admission, I think admission at Games is off a little bit too. In Greenwood, we charge $3 for adults and we don't charge any kids.
In Loyola, we charge $4 and Loyola kids are free. In a co-op, Loyola and Greenwood kids are free, but then students do pay. So if, if, say Spencer comes in, their students would be charged $4. So, and that, that is one of the reasons why we wanted to break this up is can we get that aligned?
So that would seem a little bit easier.
Yes.
I would, I would entertain the thought of any Loyola versus Greenwood games. And we just don't do admission, just to bring the communities together and like just any, any of our co-op that are, don't charge each other and hopefully pack the gyms and pack the fields.
Do you guys know how much you generate with your fees? Like, how much is that offsetting the cost right now?
So, consumable product fee this past year was just under 11,000, 11,400 is what we received for that. And then athletic fees was just under $8,000, 7950. And when we did charge in years past, you're talking athletic fees, does that need to $10,000? And then consumable product fees, $11,000 in that whole, that whole part, so.
So I do think in the Greenwood right now, it'd be a, right, like right now, it'd be a tough sell just because we are under, it's, we're under the CEP. We, we approved, they approved to continue the CEP, the community eligibility provision for free breakfast and lunch. So I think it'd be a tough sell, we'll say we're gonna provide free breakfast and lunch for everybody, but we're gonna charge it for a book. So I think that'd be, that'd be tough right now. I can tell you this, I know Loyola has, you've had that discussion too. Our CEP program ended up only after donations costing the district less than $10,000 last year. So that was a pleasant surprise.
How much were donations?
Just under $20,000.
Chris, in our sports, do you, were admission fees included in that?
So our admission to athletic events was $19,000 or $50 is what we got for admission to athletic events. That one came about when we were in COVID, just coming out of COVID. We weren't charging at the gate and you'd be surprised how many were coming in from other schools. And I was looking forward to that. I think that was one way that the board felt like, hey, I think other people do this. This is something that we can at least reap some benefit from. As far as the other fees, athletic fees, I think that is, that's a difficult situation, because you do have kids that maybe grade groups afford it.
Do you, does that was a question, do you think, do any of you think that's limiting at all to some kids being able to participate? Yes, all, all students regardless of income have to, right? Just have to pay for an athletic fee. Do you think that's limiting or preventing anyone from being able to participate?
It's hard to say, but I would sure, I would sure hope that, you know, and I have the same concern. Like, I would hate for some child... I would certainly hate for some child to not want to play or not be able to play because of cost or even be afraid to ask mom and dad to play because they're aware of the cost. So I don't, I guess I can't answer, I don't know if I, if I think that it's, you know, limiting kids from playing, but I would, I really think that that's something I should look at as a lawyer in Loyola, because I would hate for kids to not be able to play simply because of cost.
Would you entertain the idea if there was that where, I don't wanna say this, groups, individuals, or maybe older people would sponsor a kid or some, or a couple would say, hey, I got a loan that I'm drinking, you rate my loan, I'll pay for your basketball.
So that was my question, is like, do we have some type of program? But to where if they were unable to pay, they could reach out to the AD or somebody where you waived fees?
Like, like I said, we, yes, in short, it's a yes. I've been to districts before where you do that, like you, you do that. When you're looking at school districts like Greenwood and Loyola that have 40 to 50% free introduced, all of a sudden, that line gets longer for people that can't or, you know, they can't or don't make sports a priority for their income. And essentially, you end up with the people that are paying for everything else, continue to pay for things. And in that, and then that number, you know, then you're tapping, you end up tapping businesses, organizations, things like that to cover, which are already in small communities, you're already asking them to, to cover a lot of things and make a lot of donations. So I think the answer is yes, but when you get to that point, I would guess you'll find it's even less worthwhile to charge for athletics than it is now when you charge everybody, because it's just, it becomes more of a hassle.
Is it just one fee if you play sports at all or is it per sport or...
So the question is, is it just one fee for the whole season or for the whole year? No, it is in person. No, it is per sport. So. So max is one thirty. So if I have three kids playing middle school or high school, that would be for that sport.
What for that year?
For that year.
No, because I, I maxed on that shirt like this.
It's for the year.
And I'm fully gone on the board two years, but this conversation's gone full circle. The first year we said no to the fees and actually the community came back and said, hey, why aren't you charging for this stuff? So last year we put on the fees and now we're having a conversation. You know, I, I think the numbers from last year will show that no kid did go off this sport because of the cost. I think that's embarrassing. And I also would be, you know, I'm not going to speak for every coach, but I think we could say we know of a kid who's not going to come because of the cost. We're gonna find a way to get that kid over. Never, I've never been told, hey, my kid's not coming on because of thirty dollars for the fee.
So to piggyback off that, we had a kids volleyball tournament. They asked why we didn't charge four at the gate. So that is somewhere where we, I think we could look online a little bit, maybe closer to Loyal on that. I think we're all guilty of severely undercharging for admissions and things. And thinking that extra dollar or two is gonna make them not come. I can tell you for a fact grandma is still coming for the volleyball match and it's two more dollars. So that might be a way to go along and get closer to that.
I guess mine, I have that set against the school. Because your kid, my mom asked to come to the school and I charged her to come to the school. So if we get rid of that, I do think we should keep the sports up because I guess that's an option. And like Derek said, I think there's plenty of people out there that have pushed the push up and make sure that they can get their student. As far as admissions thing, I don't need to go somewhere. I don't, I don't know what we want to do.
Um, I agree we can rock and roll the, um, the sports fee, I wouldn't think on that. And the admission fee, it would be nice if we could come up to where we are.
During COVID, we didn't have any, any fees, particularly admission fees to events. I think it was that when we tried the raffles at the, particularly at the football games. And, and that's, I believe that's on Neosville, that's their, um, for admission, they just have raffles. But the challenge there would be to, you know, have people who were willing to sell the raffle tickets and then, you know, that, that people would feel that they would want to contribute to that. So it was, it was kind of, you know, there was some money raised, but not near the extent of what, what it would be if you just had a set fee. So just, just.
So during COVID, when we did, I remember that kind of started doing the fifty fifty raffles during some of the games. We had sign up of different like clubs and organizations where the kids could come volunteer. So there was like for like the band kids or like the Spanish club kids. And that was a fundraiser for them. I think it worked out well. Maybe didn't want to do a registration fee. Maybe the kids could work the table, like admission table. Donations to that club. But like the fifty fifty, when we did it, we did fifty fifty and then we did like the beanbag, the duck, we tried to make it fun and not the same main fifty fifty every time. And it went over well. I think as long as you have a sign up for each club or organization that wants to participate, has a chance to participate, sometimes you know that school year to keep it even, that'd be an option.
We do that with our concessions, like the different sports do concessions at the opposite sporting events and stuff like that, which I, I don't know. I assume that the concession money goes towards, goes on the, to the athletic fund. So that's one way that we've kind of made up for some of the athletic fees, I think, is by, and then the kids have a stake in it a little bit. I kind of think I'm fine with moving into four dollars, but I like the idea of keeping all students free to be able to come to the games regardless of the school because I don't want my kid to have to maybe get into a Loyal game that he wants to come watch his friends at when just because he goes to Greenland, even if it's not co-op school.
If I could say, if you guys get rid of your consumable fee, we'll give you our popcorn recipe. Champions, champions. It's really the butter. So the athletic fee, I don't know, you know, the, I, I think a compromise would be moving our adults up to four dollars a game if you guys are, would entertain not having, not tracking students. But again, so it's just, yeah, for all, for all, you know, it's four dollars for adult. Any, any student, high school student or low school. Yeah, yeah, that's great. And I think that promotes come to the games, come and watch your peers. But the other thing is I would like to entertain the idea of not charging each other and, and being, you know, getting this together. Good neighbors, like if there's a Greenland loyal basketball game in Greenland or not, there's just no admission. I mean, it's packed to gym. That's what it's all about, right? I mean, those are, those are our best options, packed to gym. I know probably also our best options, maybe a few bucks. But it's, it's, it's more of a, more of a, yeah, being together and packing the gym for the kids. Thoughts on that?
I agree. I agree that if we do a poll or a job, we won't have to charge each other. We are one, consolidating all sports right now, but that's maybe.
That's, that's not the case.
Okay.
And I don't know that we need to take action on that tonight. Maybe that's better for a July, right? You know, separately, whatever. Have a July meeting.
Chris, don't we currently do a just common rate for like veterans or senior citizens as well?
Veterans are free and senior citizens is it? Sixty-five and over are free.
There's a comment right out of our card already. So veterans are free and senior citizens sixty-five and over are free? Is that what you, you have something similar? Oh, yours?
We don't have that specified. I think that's appropriated.
So we know, we know if you have.
We have a family, we have an individual family. I don't know the cost on most, but I don't know off the top. I haven't.
Ours is thirty-five dollars a athletic fee. I see some passing that's in all year.
Do you have a family one also? I believe we have a family one also. And I think ours is thirty or thirty-five for an individual. But I mean, it might do. This, this is probably as good a place to figure this stuff out. But are we, are we at a place where?
You know, I think we've had some good discussion here. But I think we need to bring it into a one document or one form that we can look at. Maybe at the end of the month here at our individual meetings. I guess I would task you guys to put the conversation that we've had here into one document.
Or a joint board meeting.
Or, yeah, and then we can bring it to a meeting. Or next month, you know, either way, but I think there's a lot more discussion here than what we even started with.
So I think there were two different things there.
Two different things. We have the admission fee and then the athletic fee that I think we're trying to, trying to navigate here. Do we want to, the admission fee, I think, could wait until the beginning of August, joint board meeting. Mr. Winter and I can get together and put, I think we've heard, you know, four dollars for adults, kids are free, veterans, seniors, um, free. Uh, and then family and, family and individual past. I think we can put something like that together so it's clear for both districts for approval. But the, then is that acceptable if we do that at an August joint board meeting, early August? Then the other thing, which says that athletic fee, uh, that Loyal charges thirty per sport, for middle school, forty for high school, a hundred and thirty dollar max per family. We do zero. Or do we do that? Are we ready to have that discussion? I mean, is on the agenda. Are we ready to have that discussion tonight?
I think it'd be good because we do have registration in first part of August where a lot of this stuff is dealt with, right?
Would you guys consider doing, I mean, thirty per sport for middle school, forty for, for, for high school is a little high. I mean, would you guys, for, for us having that and you guys having nothing, would you consider like meeting in the middle? Like maybe we only do ten dollars for a middle school sport and twenty for high school or something? So we're coming down on costs. You guys are coming down a little bit. I mean, or twenty, thirty, whatever, just some things where we, maybe it's not thirty and forty. Maybe that's a little steep and maybe with, if we're doing this together, we can have a little bit of wiggle room. But I think you're right. We need to kind of get some of this, or this figured out before football starts.
I think the other piece of that is, you know, that, which we're gonna have to cross that bridge at some point, especially when we talk about co-op sports, where do those dollars go? You know, the Greenland dollars is going to Greenland, Greenland kids is going to Greenland Fontaine and Loyal kids is going to Loyal Fontaine, I would assume. But it's something, some are.
Well, right now for football, LG football, I'm paying my kids to play and that's going into.
Loyal's Fontaine. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's not necessarily going to the football.
Right, right.
There are those exact dollars.
Right.
But as far as organizing, do we want to just Loyal kid, the Loyal kids pay their registration or their athletic fee and goes at the Loyal's Fontaine, Greenwood's, or for now?
I like the idea of lower in it. Twenty to thirty, you know, and a hundred. Twenty dollars for middle school, thirty dollars high school, family a hundred dollars. Thoughts?
My question with it is, at what point in time does it become more of a hassle tracking and collecting all this that, that it's worth? I mean, in terms of the budget, what we're talking about here is peanuts. But also in the terms of working together, come to a good point, I, you know, I'm, I'm for that also. So I, I'm okay whichever direction, but I guess I just wanted to bring that up. It's, we created a whole bunch of work for not a lot of return.
Last, last year was the first, this past one was the first year.
First year since COVID.
Since COVID that we, that we charged. So the last, I'll be four or five years we have done. And then pre-COVID, we did very similar to what we are right now.
Chris, remind me, we did, did you pay for it online, right?
I don't know.
I think, I think you ended up sign up, signed a trial up for the sport and paid online. Pretty sure.
Okay. So that has been kind of a couple of different things where they, where they don't register for a sport online. But they would come and pay when they registered their, their son or daughter. Um, so you come in, Dean talks about that third is, so we had some kids that did not pay that is on their record that will be eventually either when they graduate or when they go to walk or things like that, stuff, those dues will get paid for. But that's, that's a whole thing that you gotta continue to track. But on the other hand, like you said, they're, whether the fee makes a decision on if a kid's gonna play or not? I, I don't think so. I hope not, but there's, there's sponsors out there that would make sure it gets done.
At our athletic community meeting last week, our A D also referenced the, the cost of to get referees is only increasing. So again, he's built that, that can speed right up Fontaine. If we can supplement Fontaine with some of this, I know it's small money, but that does help. And then you have somebody investing in that program essentially. So I see the fees as.
Do we want to do this as just the consolidated sports to be even? Or are we charging for every sport that we're not consolidating? I mean, you guys feel offended if we don't charge for the sports that we're not together with you guys though? I mean, I mean, we don't charge now. And I understand your referee cost. I, I get the, everyone's price and cost. So I, I think the money is what, where it needs to be for the kids in that district. So like if we charge, that money comes to us, right? It isn't going to the LG football or anything. So in that aspect, it eventually gets back into paying for whatever gets back in the Fontaine and distributed from there.
I think not making it consistent across all athletics might be a nightmare for our office staff. Just because in a, in a fall, you have volleyball, it's not a football, lacrosse country that are. And then you have to figure out which kids have to pay, which kids don't. You know, it's, that becomes a, that becomes a nightmare. You know, I think we, you know, I, when we get to our next part of setting the agenda for an August meeting, you know, I would like co-ops and timeline for co-ops on that, which can be clarified. You know, when everything, you know, has been worked towards, everything being co-op. You know, there's gonna be some that are pieces of them, like for example, you know, there may be some JV. There may be some elementary in that middle school or that JV and that varsity, there may be a transition. So if you, if you pick and choose, like the JV players have to pay even on because they're co-op. And varsity, I think it may be a record keeping nightmare for, yeah, you know, I put them through enough.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we charge, I'm just gonna try and make these, twenty dollars across the board, middle school, high school, or athletics, each sport with a max of a hundred dollars per family.
Twenty, twenty dollars a first student, no matter middle school or high school.
First student or first.
First sport, a hundred dollar max. First board, a hundred dollar max. Family or the year. Motion made second to go to a flat twenty dollar fee, middle school, high school athletics, all in favor? Opposed?
Anybody from the loyal?
I'll make a motion to go to Greenwood.
Kirk makes a motion, equal to Greenwood, second by Crystal, all those in favor?
I, who cares?
See, this is easy.
Public forum, anybody have anything you want to say, questions?
Joint, yeah, game case will be at an early August joint meeting. Uh, loyal's that's the product fee will be brought up at our next sporting meeting at the end of July. Or if you want to do it tonight.
I'll make a motion that loyal does no consumable product fees, um, consume. Early in the court, yeah, twenty-five to twenty-six, we're here.
Motion on second? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you. Public forum, public comments? Please. Hit on the side, it'll have a new red button, just hit it, no, right on the, on top of my line.
Hello, okay. I was just wondering with the timeline, maybe I should have brought up all the season, we're still here, but, um. Would it be implied if you're looking seriously at the facilities in the summer of twenty-seven? That obviously you wouldn't have change, time changes to going to two buildings or one building for that first year that you consolidated. So would you be operating under all three buildings open for the first year of the consolidated district? And then further down the road, you're gonna go to less buildings?
I think the joint board would have to make all those decisions together. I don't, I can't make those assumptions. I mean, we have to wait and see what that, if that's. So there are a lot of ifs in it. If CISA ten is a contracted service to do that work. Um, and if they give us the data that we need to make decisions that fall on a timeline that allow us to make the decisions. And if the joint board decides that they want to, or how they want to. Move forward with the data that they got from the contracted service, they would have to make, the joint board would have to make decisions. After they have that information on how to open July one, twenty twenty-eight. So I think there's a lot of ifs that, that go along with that.
Sure, and I know there are a lot of variables, I think it's just, I think the concern for the community would be if we want to save money, we should save money as quickly as possible. So getting out of the facilities as soon as we can, at least that's what I heard people.
Yeah, I think again, going back to, I think the top two priorities are saving money, but also making sure that we're giving the best educational. You know, uh, opportunities to our kids that are possible. So I think all looking, looking through any of that data through the lens of. Yes, saving money, but not at the expense of. The opportunities that we're allowing our kids to have. So we, we need to look through the lens of those two things when we're making those decisions on, on any facilities.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Have you been in contact with any other? Business? Have you been in contact with any other company as far as following a survey with this, or do you have another meeting like this that, oh, same things as we did with CISA just now?
So we have had, um, HRS. HSR, uh, has come in, in my opinion, have come in and have done a facility study with us. Five or six years ago, so in talking with them, that would need to be updated and they have not been in a, in a greenwood building yet, so that would. Be something else that would need to take place. Uh, but we've been working with, with them on different things for the last five years.
Yes, I'm aware of that. Have you been in contact with them about this? So we have a timeline involved in their second polls.
They are aware of the situation and what, what's going on. Um, you have not developed a complete timeline with them.
So is there what? That means that.
That is something that we will be talking about.
The joint board will have to do that. So I think that's the work going ahead is figuring out the timeline, filling in the gap between now and July first, twenty twenty-eight. Like filling in all those steps, what do we have to do between now and then, make sure that we're ready for July one, twenty twenty-eight consolidation. If that includes facility studies, then there's going to be a process that the joint board is gonna have to figure out what that process is. And if that includes going to RFP or companies to come in and tell us what their services are and what their costs are, then that's. That would be part of that process, but we haven't, we haven't had a discussion with the joint board yet.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
All right, next meeting date, Wednesday, August sixth at seven P M. I mean, I, there's three of us here to have football.
So I'm not sure if, because we didn't have on the agenda, you know, discussion of, of the visit that we had yesterday at, at a school in eastern, northeastern Wisconsin. Because there were board members from both communities that participated, so just, do you want, do we want to have any discussion on that? Or do we want to put that on the agenda for the next meeting? Which is, I find that that is our next meeting agenda.
So the sixth is Clark County Fair week, which we want to avoid. Do we want to go a week later? The thirteenth? Or, I mean, it doesn't have to be, uh. Doesn't have to be on Monday or a Wednesday night either. Jamie's asking, would a Sunday night be better with sports right around in August? I mean, I would like, I guess I would like to get to a point where we're just, we set date like we do for our regular meetings and then maybe, you know, whether it's. First Wednesday of every month, we put on the calendar, but I also understand Clark County Fair is a big deal. Um, so that, you know, we're gonna have to just, Christmas sometimes falls on the fourth Wednesday, we have to move it, it's kind of a big deal. What about before the, the third? The fair, right? Sunday the tenth? Oh.
The second Wednesday every month.
So the second, so the thirteenth?
About every month, you would have the second Wednesday.
The thirteenth is okay, right? What's that?
I have, my next summer is our full.
The fourteenth of August, then what every month?
That's, that's new to me to have a showing of Daddy on this. She moved it all the way. Or someone, someone ever did.
You're not gonna vote that tonight. Sunday the third works. Can we back it off at seven thirty? We can back off.
Sunday the third? Fair people? Oh, that was the third word. There's no prep time before the third.
Seven thirty, eight o'clock, what is the third? Ten? All right, the third, seven thirty, how's that? No, not at all, but I think we can decide on the third. From there, then we can decide, right?
Down in Greenwood, the third, at seven thirty, in Greenwood. Livestreamed and recorded. And then, and then can we, can we also? Can we also like tentatively look at the second Wednesday of every month, like between now and then? Look at your calendars and try and put the second Wednesday of every month. In your calendar and if it's. Try that, I think that's the easiest, and if we have to change something the month before, we'll do that.
All right, now the meeting is set. One of the things Bob Butler explained to us that, um. If a member of the school board wants a certain thing on the agenda, now would be the time to present that or suggest that. So the one thing I will suggest is I would like a discussion about a potential facility study and what an RFP for that study would look like.
Can we change, like, change that to developing an overall timeline first? Like, I think we need, I think we need to, we need to come up with a timeline and talk about all the things in that timeline between now and July one of twenty twenty-eight. That everybody is thinking about and, and what are those steps to get there? And if, if that's part of it, then then we would go for that.
As long as we can lead into that discussion. One of the things, because the way you guys stream and the way we stream is different, and since we're gonna be running as one, can we get that discussed? What on the next month, so you can tell us all.
We are trying to stream the same way you stream. It feels like it's upstream.
Yeah, but I, I think we need discussion. I mean, I don't agree the way we stream and I think we should have a discussion on it in, over next month.
Okay, we're, we're planning to, yeah, we're going to live stream our joint meetings and record us, yeah. Press up a button. We know a guy.
Yeah, but I'd like that on the agenda, how long it needs to stay on and that kind of stuff and have discussion on that. Any other agenda topics? Anybody here would like to see?
Well, just a bubble on discussion of, and I'm not sure how to word that, but it would be, um. It's a lot of school visits, yeah, school visits and if there's gonna be, I know there's a couple other schools possibly that we're gonna be looking at that are quite so far away as there's some. Changes they made and, and whether that's something.
I mean, we should put that as, as a school visits.
Briefing from visits.
Yeah, briefings from school visits. Something I, I've been thinking about a couple of things, um, obviously we need the admission fees on it or gain admission fees on the agenda. Um, I think that it would be healthy, which can also fall in line with timelines, but I think we should probably start talking about are there, may I have committees and what are those going to be? Like, do we need to start talking about what community involvement, what committees we want to start looking at to help us make some decisions and, and help keep us transparent on, on those decisions? There's gonna be a lot of things that we need to talk about, I think, to involve some of them. We will probably want to have products in a row. For that, so if we could talk about committees and then the other thing was I would like to bring out the co-op timeline and, and look at. Co-op sports, if we have a timeline between now and July first, twenty twenty-eight to have a progression to get that all in line. Is that okay to have on that agenda as well? Just a discussion? We have one? Anything else?
Just real quick before adjournment, um, condolences to the family of Mark Shane. Mark was a multiple school board, multiple term school board member, bus driver, B O A president for the county. Uh, just a good person, condolences to the family. Would that entertain? Got a motion in the second, all those in favor?